We have a couple of special things to do before our council meeting starts. I'm going to ask the city manager to come up. He has sort of a special proclamation here, but I want the manager to turn over the library a little.
Well, thank you, Mayor County. This is a very special evening. Not only is this the last council meeting of the year 2012, it is the last meeting for our deputy city manager, Allen McKinley. And Allen, if you wouldn't mind, with all of that modesty tucked away for just a moment, to come down here. And the mayor is going to read in just a moment a proclamation, but in anticipation of this moment, I've surveyed our staff within the organization. I've asked them to provide for me a few comments about Mr. McKinley and his tenure with the city. Some of these are funny, some of them are serious, but all, I think, very interesting to describe the work that Allen has done here for the city. Here's the first one. They are not in any particular order, but I found it very interesting. First one, "Allen is the best thing to come out of Indiana." Allen is from the state of Indiana. "Since Dan Quayle for president." Here's another one. "Allen was always the guy to give the checks to whenever there was a presentation, donation to the city. He was like your mom holding the important papers because you knew you wouldn't lose it." Here's another comment about Allen. "Some are the calm before the storm, some are the storm, but Allen is the calm through the storm." Very accurate statement about Allen McKinley. "Allen is so adept at numbers that he never shot over par on a golf course." Here's one. "The city has been through some very strenuous budget reductions during Allen's time with the city of Des Moines. With Allen as budget officer, finance director, and then deputy city manager, staff always felt inspired to do their part in making budget reductions for the good of the organization, in part because of Allen's selflessness and compassionate example of teamwork." Very true statement about Allen. "The best words to describe Allen are professional, honest, and a man with high integrity that generally cares about his colleagues and his community." The last three things I want to do for Allen, I say "for" Allen with, I guess, a sort of grain of salt there, but in any event, these are sort of three little vignettes, three little stories which I think are just, I'm going to love these. Allen is not going to like them so much. But here's the first one. And this, this one is from one of Allen's colleagues, one of our great employees, Mark Durham. It begins like this. "Many years ago, when Allen and Mark Durham worked in the budget office together, Mark had a guest in his cubicles who had the gift of talk." That means he talked probably too much, "and he just would not go away. After listening for quite some time, Mark noticed something out of the corner of his eye at the top of his cubicle wall. Someone doing an imitation of Kilroy was here." Guess who that was? And then he walked it old. There it is. And that's the, that's drawing of none other than Mr. McKinley looking over the wall doing his imitation of Kilroy was here. And the next thing I want to show you is a picture, if I can cue it, a picture from the 1980s of a team, Allen and colleagues. Now, I think I can tell you who some of the folks are. Far, top right is Mr. McKinley, holding two fingers above the head of Dick Wright to his right, your left. I think you can see Mike Green in the top left. Do you remember Ty in the bottom and the middle? Mark Durham bottom right, and probably this is a few others, but those are some other city folks that Allen has worked with over the years. Here's another little story. I just, this is, I've just got two more of these, so bear with me with this one or three. Here is a picture and a testament to Allen's love of Indiana basketball. Allen once said, or once told about how back in college, they would do anything to catch a Hoosers basketball game, especially the ones that were sold out. A few times, Allen and his friends even navigated the steam tunnels through the campus to enter Assembly Hall. One could attest that Allen's future success of being a cruel financial manager started by sneaking into college basketball. Indiana, that's our guy, that's Allen McKinley.
And I was never caught.
Watch that statement. Okay, okay, follow those numbers. Now, here's the last one, but I've actually saved the very, very best of the last. I can even hear him muttering on this one. Okay. "Allen McKinley, a man so likable and full of integrity that it took Hall of Famer Goose Gossage to swear for him after a bad tee shot." Here's the story. A favorite Allen story is about a family trip to Colorado. They arrived in Vail just in time for Allen to get in a round of golf. The pro shot paired Allen with a guide by the name of Goose. Goose ended up being Hall of Fame pitcher Goose Gossage. Gossage and Allen golfed eighteen holes together. Goose didn't exactly have Allen's sense of wholesomeness, as you might imagine, and at one point, Allen shanked a drive. Mr. Gossage said to Allen, "Don't you ever swear?" Allen said, "No, no, I don't. I just don't believe in it." Gossage replied, "Well, you should, and the next time you hit a bad shot, I'm swearing for you." So sure enough, upon Allen's next, Gossage yelled, "Excellent, delete it." And that was that story. Anyhow, that's the Goose Gossage story. So that's, those are the things that came from some of the colleagues that worked for the state. But just one last comment from me, and that is that in an organization like city government, there are people like me, I'm the city manager or the mayor, you know, we are either fortunate or unfortunate enough to get our name in the paper quite a bit, but there's people like Allen who really have that opportunity. But yet at the same time, it's the people like Allen that make the organization work. I really have a lot of respect for the work you've done, Allen, over the years. You're going to be missed by me and all of your colleagues. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and ask the mayor.
I don't get to read the funny stuff here. Come back. Okay, we're going to swamp this out. Why don't we have them come on? Paula Mallory, come on up. On July 27, 1981, Allen McKinley was hired as an operations and program analyst in the city's finance department. And on July 18, 1982, he was promoted to budget analyst, and on May 16, 1983, he was promoted to senior budget analyst. And on August 26, 1985, he was promoted to research and budget officer. And on July 1, 2006, he was promoted to finance director. And then on July, or January 1, 2011, he was promoted to the deputy city manager. And during all of those, 11,478 days of Allen's career, he has excelled in understanding and leading the city's financial matters. And when Allen became the deputy city manager, he spent his time concentrating on all city departments and other government entities, always striving to make Des Moines a better place to live, work, and raise a family. And whereas Allen leaves, a legacy in the guidance he gave to many aspects of the city and state government that will be used and enjoyed for many years to come, and his dedication to the city of Des Moines and its residents is rivaled only by his devotion to his family. And whereas thankfully, Allen understands terms like TIF, G A S B, rollback, SMID, arbitrage, encumbrances, and depreciation, and can quickly perform complicated calculations in his head, and Allen could often be heard saying, "Cash is king." And whereas Allen has developed close working relationships with coworkers and others who will miss him and miss working with him, his work ethic, high sense of fairness, wisdom, institutional knowledge, and sense of humor will be sorely missed. Allen's calmness under fire and strong dedication have made him not only a valuable asset to this city, but also a genuine leader. And whereas Allen will be free of phone calls, emails, government red tape, endless meetings, and other aspects of working in municipal government, and will have Monday mornings and evenings free to do as he pleases, and whereas we, his friends, are here to honor and thank Allen, who is retiring this month, and we wish him the very best in his well-deserved retirement. Now therefore, I, the mayor of the city of Des Moines, on behalf of our city council and our citizens, do hereby proclaim Friday, December 28, 2012, as Allen McKinley Day. Let's give him a great big hand. We want to get the whole council in here. We sort of pipe it up. And then we bring the family in. Applause here. Let me squeeze behind you. Please.
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Diane, do you have more to mention?
Hey Frank?
We're going to have a moment coming up, December 21st. It's important to our city, and it's all about homelessness. But Greta, I'd like you to kind of explain what we're going to do and what this is all about.
On behalf of all the homeless and the unsheltered in Des Moines, I'd like to invite everyone to come to the West Capitol Terrace at 5:30 this Friday night, the longest winter night, winter solstice. We will give memorial for those who have died homeless in the Des Moines community. And after that, we invite our whole community, including all of our homeless clients, come down to the Japa Outreach Center, and we have wrapped gifts for all of the homeless clients in Des Moines, and live music. And many of them don't get a chance to have a family, or to go home for Christmas, or have a celebration, so the Des Moines community gives them that opportunity.
In recognition of this, and what year is this? How many years have you been there?
I think this is the third year for the memorial.
Okay. So each year, over the past three years, and I think we did something else before that, they've been doing this up on the Capitol steps, and it's really been moving event. And so those of you who can attend, it really is one of those moments that we should all think together and share together and hope for the best for our hungry and homeless members of this community, and not only here, but throughout the state and the country. The proclamation reads, "Whereas the winter poses extreme hardship for unsheltered and inadequately housed low-income women and children in Des Moines, and whereas the spirit of the holiday season of giving provides an opportunity for affirmation and renewal regarding the commitment to end homelessness. And whereas December 21st has been designated National Homeless Persons Memorial Day by the National Coalition for the Homeless and the National Health Care for the Homeless Council, and is so recognized by cities nationwide. And whereas in this season of generosity and sharing, citizens of Des Moines are encouraged to commit themselves to promoting compassion and concern for all brothers and sisters, especially those who are poor and homeless. And whereas in remembering those who have died on the streets, the cause of ending homelessness is kept urgent, as in the city's collective commitment to preventing such deaths in the future. Now therefore, I, the mayor, on behalf of the city council and the citizens of Des Moines, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Friday, December 21, 2012, as National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. In recognition of people who have died homeless in and around Des Moines, we hereby ask all of our citizens to take a moment of silence and remember, and encourage our citizens to support all local efforts to eliminate homelessness in our community." Greta, thank you very much, and hope everybody can be up there. Great, thank you. Let's show Greta appreciation for the work that she does. She works, Greta, with Japa Outreach and all the other organizations in and around this community that endeavor to make an improvement in the lives of those who have so little. Thanks. We'll start in a minute. Okay, we're back. We're going to do a quick presentation. Jason Van Essen has, we have some awards for excellence in historic preservation, and we're going to begin handing them out, and Jason's going to, we have some slides to show. Everybody, what's going on?
Yes, absolutely.
All right.
Every year, we do the Excellence in Historic Preservation Award. Susan Holder Niss is with us tonight. She's the chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, and we look forward to being with you guys. So I'll just introduce the project, and if the individuals receiving the award come up, and we'll flip through the sides and get through this quickly. The first project is Villa Francie, 410 Franklin Avenue. It'd been an apartment complex, and the owner's Mike Hildbrand and Reese Adair. Go ahead and come forward. I've been spending time bringing it back. So this is some before pictures. Exterior work you can see included the new tiled roof. Lot of changes on the interior with bringing that, the trim and the woodwork back, bringing it back from an apartment building to a single-family house. So with that... The owners, Adam Bartelt and April Zasowski. I'm sure I slaughtered that, but this is another case where it was apartment building, and the owners are taking the process of bringing it back, all the work that goes into that. Couple before pictures, you can see what they've been working with, and they've made a lot of progress, and we thank them for that. Our next project is a house known as the Oak House, 1906 Ninth Street. Brienne Boland and Gregory Barnum are the owners. This is another case where it was apartment buildings, and they've been putting a lot of effort in bringing it back. Lot of exterior work that was needed, including removal, cover-up siding. You can just tell by the pictures the effort that's gone into it.
Oh, wow.
Our next project is 300 Tonawanda Drive. I like this one because it shows that we're not just about Victorian houses. This is a 1956 modern contemporary-style house. Lot of work was done on the exterior-interior remodel. I'll go ahead and flip through the pictures here. Sympathetic addition was added to it for some outdoor space, removing, redoing the flooring and the interior. And keeping the, one thing here with this kitchen is that they kept that same style, but they made it kind of modern and useful, so it was a good blend. Next, we have the Federal Courthouse on East Walnut Street. This project, Substance Architecture, GSA, and the court system, the owner. These are some interior shots. They did some remodeling of some lobby space, did an in-depth analysis of the paint, went back through the different layers to see what the original colors were, looked at drawings to see what the original light fixtures looked like. Just a lot of great detail. So here's afterwards with woodwork being brought up or rehabbed, and the paints scheme Next, we have the Crane Building, 1440 Walnut Street. As you can tell by these pictures, and if you've driven past them, this is a total rehab. So this is MDI Limited Partnership, Noel's Blanc Architecture. I'll just go ahead and flip through the slides. Last but not least, we have the Fitch Building that's now Exile Brewery. So here's some historic photographs, slingshot architecture, William Page, the project historian. Thank you.
Let's have one more round of applause for everybody that's been doing this work. Handing the fabric of our great capital city. Jason, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Prior to the start of our city council meeting, we're going to have a short meeting of the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board. I will call the meeting to order and quickly ask the clerk to take roll.
County?
Here.
Coleman?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Mahaffey?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item two is approving the Poe County Housing Trust Fund Grant Agreement, $100,000. Board Communication Number 12-612. Anybody in the audience to speak on this item? Any comments or thoughts from the board? Could we have a motion, please?
Move.
Item's been moved to approve the trust fund grant agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item three is authorizing the... Item three is authorizing Municipal Housing Agency Director to execute the 2012-13 Investment Agreement with the United Way of Central Iowa. Board Communication Number 12-613. Anyone in the audience to speak on that? The agreement with United Way. Seeing none?
Move.
It's been moved. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. Item four is approving the proration of rental assistance to the project-based voucher participants. Board Communication Number 12-611. Is there anyone in the audience to speak on this item? Hearing none, could we have a motion? Item's been moved. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. We need a motion to adjourn.
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the Municipal Housing Agency Governing Board now sits adjourned for calendar year We've had some special presentations this evening regarding excellence in historic preservation and certainly noticing our great deputy city manager and also our National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. Prior to the start of our council meeting, we often have a few words, but prior to that, I just want to make a couple of quick statements and then I'm going to turn it over to our own council member, Brian Meyer. You know, over the last, in recent past few weeks, we've endured a number of tragedies, not only in the United States, but certainly here in the state of Iowa and all of us on this council and everybody sitting at this table has felt sort of an overwhelming sadness from the events of the past few weeks and we all have families and we all think of our children as we contemplate the things that we should be doing. You know, whether it's at a shopping mall in Oregon or a theater in Colorado or a school in Connecticut or two young children found in a farm field in Iowa. It is important that we, as a city council, who has, our city has received an awful lot of good recognition by many numbers and many accounts and many sources. Best place to raise a family, the best place to start a business, the best place for young professionals to have a career. And most recently, this last week, I think we got yet another recognition. And I think this council regularly makes decisions that we hope have a positive effect on people's lives, whether it's a new park or a new recreational program, newer refurbished streets or curbs or gutters or sidewalks or planting trees to improve the quality of life and the health of our environment. We want a more exciting, more inviting place for people to live and have a business in our city. But most of us, and for all of us, our number-one thing is to make sure our people are safe. And that commitment is reinforced every single year as we pass a budget and we're coming up on that budget season and we commit 60% of our operating budget to public safety. And I want to recognize all of our public safety officers, whether they be police or they be fire, for the fine work that they do in this city. But I think it's all of us working together that makes that commitment a reality and hopefully for everybody in our city, we can continue to be proud and rejoice and be grateful for a upcoming great year. But I am hopeful that as we think of this holiday season and we hope, and it's my hope personally, that those that are suffering, whether from tragedy to themselves or their loved ones, that they can know the, and receive some cessation from that suffering and the causes of that suffering and that we hope that everybody sees happiness during this holiday season. Quickly, want to turn it over to our council member, Brian Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor. And I wrote something out. I don't usually do prayers, but I do a moment of silence, but because of what happened on Friday and it's the Christmas holiday season, all of us at this table have children. Please join me in prayer. I'll try and keep it together. God, in this holiday season, we pray for the 20 children that were taken from us in Newtown this past Friday. We also pray for the adult victims. We pray that their families will find peace in this painful time and we pray that all children will be protected this Christmas. Please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, it's clerk to take role, please.
County.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Mahaffey.
Here.
Hensley.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item two is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended.
Move.
It's been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The item passes. Item three is approving the consent agenda. Tonight, these are items three through 40 and these are items that are generally taken as one roll call unless somebody from the audience wants to speak on the issue or have clarification or a member of the council. Tonight, those items, items 4T and 4Z, Councilmember Coleman votes no. Item 4I, Councilmember Hensley wishes to speak. Item six, Councilmember Moore votes no. Item 10C, Councilmember Moore asked to speak. Item 32, Hensley wishes to speak and item 34, Councilmember Meyer wishes to speak. Are there any other items? Anybody in the audience? Number 33.
Mayor, I had an added item under 35 and I'd like that pulled.
You'd like to pull it?
Yes, so we can speak.
Okay. All right, any others? All right, so we're going to speak on 4I, 10C, 32, 33, 34, and 35.
Is that where it is? 35A.
Okay, 35A. All right, the remainder of the items have been moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The item passes. That takes us to item 4I. Four is approving alcoholic beverage license applications for the following.
Correct.
And, yes.
It's added after the I.
I'm sorry?
It's a 4I inserted between four and phi, at the bottom of four.
This is 4I. Actually, this is also a consideration for Class C liquor license for Ingersoll, 3711, Ingersoll Avenue. Zoning Department recommends denial of this license and Mrs. Hensley wishes to speak.
I would like to speak and I've got some comments prepared. I don't know if there's anybody from the neighborhood association that's willing, that wants to come up, or do you want me to just make some comments? Not seeing anybody, I'll just go ahead then. Ted, did you want? Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Ted Irvine. I have a business at 2801 Ingersoll Avenue and I also live in the neighborhood. The theater on Ingersoll is a real gem and in the efforts of all the folks that I've been working with for the last eight or nine years, it really hasn't, it hasn't been what it could be and developments lately there have made it, I think, go from being an interesting building that could have a lot of potential to being something that's just a little bit scary and downright dangerous. And I don't think any of the efforts of the last couple of years to fix any of those problems have taken hold. I think there are several folks in the area that'd like to see something done about it and it just hasn't, hasn't been done. I know the police department's worked very closely with the folks to try to fix some of the issues, but they just keep cropping up. So in my mind, I think it'd be a very good thing to deny a liquor license to a business like that that's not, not working with everybody to do the right things in the neighborhood. Thanks.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to deny the liquor license and I'd like to enter into the record the following comments. I know that the council is very aware of the discussions we've had and the change in venues, change in the licensee, so I want to make sure that we've done everything we possibly can. Unfortunately, they'll still be able to serve alcohol during the, excuse me, the Christmas season, but I think we've got an extremely strong case for denial. The property in question lacks the required parking for the businesses on the property and is in violation of Section 134, 1377, 823 of the municipal code. The property is also in violation of additional zoning ordinances in Chapter 134 of the municipal code concerning but not limited to failure to screen existing parking from residential uses, failure to enclose a dumpster and failure to provide a site plan for review. Applicant has also failed to show that its food sales are at least 50% of the gross receipts and therefore the applicant is in violation of Section 134-954 of the municipal code. Excuse me. On April 24th, an audit of financial records was requested to show proof of operation as a restaurant. On May 25th, applicant's final, our financial consultant was granted until June 2012 to submit the audit. The financial data was submitted on July 20th, so it was late even after the allowed time was increased. Due to discrepancies in the financial data, the audit was inconclusive and no additional information has been submitted. In July of 2012, ownership changed from Keisha Barnes to Jennifer Church. On December 5th of 2012, this year, an audit was requested by Jennifer Church. No information has been provided on the December 5th request. And I could go on and on, but I'm going to stop there and make a motion to deny the liquor license.
I'm supportive of it, but the time period, it, their current one expires at the end of this month.
It does, but if they go through the appeal process, which they have 30 days, they can still serve.
Jennifer Church.
Okay.
Hi. I would just like to say, we just received a letter on last Wednesday, December 12th. There is nothing about an audit. All it says on our letter is failure to screen existing parking from residential use and failure to enclose a dumpster. We have requested a lock from Ankeny Sanitation and that came and now the dumpster's locked. And the site plan for review, I just, it's nothing to do with management. That is our property owner, Mr. Lee, which we contacted him Thursday and Friday as soon as we received the letter. The audit, I just need an extension. We just received this on Wednesday. It's two days. It's already Monday. I can't have that.
It's back in July.
Not from me.
Well, you-
This is the first letter of Jennifer Church.
I, you know, I really don't-
Under new management.
We've had one story after another and I'm not really interested in more stories. I'm going to move to deny.
Christine, I support your motion, but just for the record, I'm looking at a copy of a letter that was mailed to Jennifer Church at the address on December 5th, which references the April 2012 letter that was sent requesting the audit. And I think that letter is further in our packet. I think that letter existed. So.
It is.
I'd like to point out that that letter goes on, say, in August, we received an audit that was inconclusive, so we must have received a partial audit from you.
We did.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
We have a motion?
Correct.
All right, who should she reference for any questions?
She could talk to Doug Phillip.
Jennifer, I think that probably you should talk to Doug Phillip.
Okay.
And he'll give you sort of a rundown of where you go from here. All right? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item 10C. Item 10 is accepting the completed construction and approving final payment for the following and C is the City Hall Window Replacement Strong Tower Construction LLC, doing business as Coke Corporation. And Mr. Moore asked to speak on this item. Mr. Moore?
Mayor, thank you. I don't know how I missed this. In the past, I did ask a question of somebody within the last couple of months and they told me that the door replacement wasn't part of the window replacement. I see that we have paid in full for these doors, but I do not believe that we order damaged doors and these are damaged doors. They drilled holes in them and some of the doors, they put carriage bolts in to fill the holes that weren't necessary. The ones out front, the main entrance to City Hall, they've put some kind of putty in there and spray painted over it and they didn't do a good job. If you stand in the hallway between the front and back door, you can see where the storm seals aren't meeting and I would hate to be standing by one if there was hard rain and wind blowing that way. I think there's a lot of issues with these doors and I would myself like to have an explanation as how we approve these doors. Because I'm, I'm not a door technician by any means, but I can sure see the problems with them and I do not, I just can't figure out how we approve these doors and they've been paid for.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Moore, councilmembers. Mr. Moore, your comments are correct. We've had difficulties with this installation and as you note, the hardware that was initially put on the doors was the wrong style. We had to ask contractor to come back and replace it. There is additional work that is scheduled to be done on the doors based on the contract that we have. This was a project that was funded with a federal energy grant. We are under some deadline, I must say, in terms of indicating the formal completion of the work in order to get reimbursed by the federal government. However, all of that said, I am aware of the issues that you've expressed and Mayor County has also expressed issues to me and to Jeb Brewer, our city engineer, and I'd be happy to provide a very definitive report to you on all those issues. However, I must, I must suggest that, that given the financial consequences of not taking the action on this, that it would mean that we would risk the reimbursement of substantial dollars, which I don't think would be in the city's interest. So I would respectfully ask that you do approve the item, but we are happy to continue researching the issues that you've talked about. And I would note, for the purposes of the council, that there is a warranty agreement that remains in place and we do have outstanding issues with the contractor that we will be working with over the next several months.
Mr. Mayor, when does that warranty start? Or is it already rolling? And what's the period of the warranty?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to have to turn to Jeb Brewer to answer that question.
Mayor, members of council, Jeb Brewer's an engineer. On the doors, there's a two-year warranty period. That warranty period essentially starts, you know, when we have acceptance of the contract. As Mr. Clark mentioned, this particular project was funded with 500, of the $491,000 for this contract, 492 is from an energy grant. The contractual requirements on that is that everything needs to be fully completed and reimbursed by the 30th of this month. The warranty work does give us some legal- the contractor, well, some of those, well, one of the doors will actually be addressed by a complete replacement of the door. There is an industry standard as far as allowing for field repairs on some of the doors, and those repairs have to stand up to during the warranty period if there's any additional work that needs to be done. But the industry standard does allow for some field repair and spot repair for the doors. These are custom doors. They're custom finished. The design is in order to make the historical compliance with the building as far as the width and the type of door and the color, which does add some more difficulty versus an anodized finish, which is more durable. But we wanted to make sure, in compliance with Shippo's recommendations, to get these doors to be historically compliant with the original color.
Thank you. I'll move 10C.
All right. Do we have another speaker?
This is Mark Nigus. He's a project manager, so he will be doing a walkthrough this week.
All right.
Six, yes, one, no.
Item 32 is the Second Amendment of the Economic Development Loan with Protocol Driven Healthcare, Inc., PDHI. This item was pulled by Councilmember Hensley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just, I appreciate very much the economic development staff working with this entity to make sure that they make their payments back to the city. And what I would request is that we have a report at a workshop on other like projects, excuse me, so we can get an update.
Mrs. Hensley, if I may, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Mrs. Hensley, council members, you asked for a similar thing at a recent workshop, and we are in the process of preparing a comprehensive report. Matt's nodding his head yes. So we will indeed get a full report to you on projects, including some very large projects that council has funded over the years in terms of their compliance with contract provisions. And once you have that report, if you want additional information, we'd be happy to provide that as well.
Excellent. I'll move 32. Seven, yes?
Item 33 was pulled at the request of a member of the gallery here. Conceptual Development Plan for the Restoration Renovation of Central Fire Station Number One by the Des Moines Social Club, Council Communication Number 12-612.
Marlon Mormon, 3320 Kinsey. I'm a member of the Urban Design Review Board. The board made an extra recommendation on this property, and I wanted to come to make sure you folks understood the import. Within the plan, the house, the building is to be listed on the historic register. The historic register doesn't really provide any long-term protection for historic property. A property can be listed today, tomorrow, the owner has the right to demolish it if they want. The only time there's any protection is during the period when tax credits are received. Now, under the contract, and I've reviewed the contract, it's 113 pages. Within it has a deed that says these provisions hold till 2023. So you have 10 years of protection under your contract. The board went and wanted to make an extra recommendation that you put this as a local landmark, which would have ongoing oversight by the Historic District Commissioner and the appropriate commission. The board was very concerned that we have so few of these historic properties left. It's an iconic property, it's important, and they really wanted long-term oversight to make sure this is preserved for future generations. So I wanted to make sure that you understood we had that recommendation. Staff feels it's inappropriate, it's too late, they already negotiated the contract. My response is, you haven't sold it yet. So there's our recommendation. I want to make sure you have a chance to consider it. Any questions?
Christine?
I raised that question, too, in reading the blue letter and asked legal to respond. And so I'm going to look to Jeb to respond to that because staff is coming back and saying no. So my question would be, why would we not go forward and do the registration based upon the Urban Renewal Board? Is there additional cost, or what are the problems with that?
The council has a signed executed agreement. The city cannot unilaterally impose a new requirement that's not in the agreement without being a material breach of the agreement. And that creates a possibility that the project wouldn't be done, for example, could expose the city to liability under the contract for the material breach. Certainly, if council's direction would be for the city to voluntarily approach, I'm sorry, to approach and ask that the purchasers voluntarily seek that and/or provide any additional assurances or cost, that could take place. But the council is not in a position unilaterally with that agreement without being a material breach to impose that as a requirement.
Do we know what the actual requirements are to go through and register as a landmark? As a city landmark? Does it cost money? What's the process?
It doesn't cost anything. You can take the paperwork you used for the historic register and use that. It really is not a complicated process, except for your city procedure, is my opinion.
So the only issue here, then, is the fact that it was not in the original agreement that was signed with them, and that's problematic. But I would agree that if we went on a voluntary basis, why would they not do that?
I don't know.
It's really easy to get money using historic registered listing, where you have greater oversight and more, you have to go before, you know, the commissions to get approval of permits. So the easy way to get your tax credits is just do historic registered listing, yet you have no strings attached after it's done.
Mr. Manager?
Just from my perspective, Mayor and council, I would offer this perspective. I think the comment that the city's interest is making sure the building stays is entirely appropriate. Every intention we had in doing this project was that the building be preserved and that it would be a permanent part of the city's urban fabric, if you will. Mr. Mayor, I would suggest, in line with what City Attorney Jeff Lester said, that we would be willing to approach the developer and have a discussion about their willingness to do the landmark, local landmark designation, keeping in mind that we can't legally mandate it. But I would also suggest that we look at other provisions, whether or not the, and I simply don't know, and maybe you know, that the federal designation for historic landmark may carry similar restrictions in terms of the need to preserve the building that outlasts the 10-year contract that the city has.
Listing on the historic register, there's no teeth to it, except for the use of the tax credits. You're just done once the tax credits are used, and there's, I think, a five-year clawback period after the tax credit.
Well, that-
So there's nothing else. Now, you know, one of the solutions is, they don't want to jump through the hoops to have to deal with landmark status. Why not have them do landmark status in year number nine? Or after they get their project done? Then they get to have the freedom to do what they want, under jurisdiction of the Park Service, because they're using tax credits. Then after that, have it a landmark. I mean, you know, that would be a great way to go, too. That preserves it for the next generation. That gives long-term oversight. So there's another option that doesn't interfere with their construction plans and permits.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you coming here.
Thank you.
And I guess what I would like to do is make a motion that we at least have a meeting with them to sit down and have discussions along these lines. I think I saw Jake Christiansen back there that's part of the project. So if we could have some discussions with all of the appropriate parties and explore these options and see if we can make something happen.
Do you want us to look at it first and then report back to you?
Yes. Well, what I'd like to do is to have us make sure we understand exactly what it entails so that when we sit down and have a meeting that we can be prepared to work with them. Matt, you know?
Yes, I know.
Okay.
Matt Anderson is Assistant City Manager, and I agree, Ms. Hensley, we can sit down with the developer as part of that motion and discuss, as Mr. Mormon said, maybe going through that process while the building's under development or after it's developed. The one thing I will ask you as part of your motion tonight, from a procedural standpoint, the, where we have, as you recall, we have certain benchmarks in the timeline for this project that they have to hit before we're able to convey the property. This is one of those benchmarks from the timeline, is council's approval of the conceptual development plan. So I would ask that, from a timeline standpoint, you can approve the conceptual development plan tonight, and as part of that motion, direct us to follow up. And that can be one of those new benchmarks that we'll have to hit before the property can be conveyed.
Very good. Thank you. So I'll move item 33 to approve the conceptual plan with the ask that we also have a follow-up meeting. Seven, yes?
Takes us to item 34, Acceptance of Proposal from Active Network, Inc. for Online Park and Recreation Registration, Reservation, and Payment Services and Approving the Contract, Council Communication Number 12-630. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a great step forward for the Parks and Rec Department. It's an online registration, as you can tell by the statement. But over the summer, a lot of you, as I did, had constituents that were waiting in very long lines out at the pools and at other facilities to try and get their passes for the year. This now gives an opportunity for many, many new reasons to get those permits online, including all of the aquatic centers and registration for things like softball, basketball, pickleball, and which, and yoga in the park, which bring in collectively 40,000 people. So I want to thank city manager, Ben Page, Parks and Rec Director. And I joked with him today and said, welcome to 1998 with online registration. But it is a huge step forward for them. So thank you to Ben and the city manager. Thanks. I'll move 34.
Mr. Manager?
Just if I might, Mr. Mayor, very much appreciate those comments, and thanks to Ben as well. Just another comment, I take your point about 1998. But the fact is that this is really, I hope, the tip of the iceberg. Our intention as a city is to do as much as we can of our business online, so that concept should be applied to other business operations we have. You think particularly of building permits or licenses that come out of CD or the clerk's office, and our intention is to move that way as quickly as we can to do as much online for the citizens. This is a great first step, though, and Mr. Meyer is exactly correct in pointing out the significance of it. So appreciate those comments.
Seven, yes?
All right. Takes us to item 35. It's a grant agreement with Homeland, Iowa Homeland Security and the Energy Management Division and Iowa Department of Administrative Services for Cyber Risk Reduction, Council Communication Number 12-627. A under that is a council discussion regarding community safety in our public buildings and public spaces. Mr. Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to first recognize and thank the very moving comments that you made and Councilman Meyer made at the beginning of the meeting. This item 35 happened to deal with homeland security, and I'm, you know, barely hijacking it for the purposes of, you know, maybe just starting a discussion over the weekend.
Don't use the word hijack.
Thank you. Yeah, that's probably a good point. Over the weekend, I know we all talked to lots of people, and I was speaking with my dad, who's actually the person who challenged me, and he said, you know, you just hope that a horrible tragedy like what happened in Connecticut doesn't happen in vain, that at least people recognize the horrible situation and try and make changes or improvements to make sure that things like this are less likely to happen in the future. And I think it was him that said, so what does the city do different to make sure? And, you know, my initial response to people all the time is, I'm really proud of our police officers, our firefighters, the public servants that we have in every department in our city, and I think we do remarkable things. And I'm proud that we have police officers in our high schools and with their ear on the ground, tracking things. And we've been really blessed that this kind of situation hasn't happened here in Des Moines. And I think as we know almost anything that government might do, wouldn't guarantee that this kind of thing wouldn't happen here. But it does strike me that, as a city councilperson, the one thing that I can do is to kind of push a conversation and challenge our team here to try and do what it can to take one more step forward. Maybe that's from a public policy standpoint. Maybe it's challenging the manager and his employees to do the things that maybe we haven't done in the past because they're just a little bit harder to do, or it requires a little bit more cooperation. And I hope that coming out of this, manager, you'll lead some discussions with our police chief and fire chief, with the leaders of the county, the county sheriff, our school district, the people that control and operate especially the public spaces here, so that our citizens continue to have the high level of confidence they've always had and that they should have in the safety of our community. But it just strikes me, and I know the mayor shares my thoughts, that how irresponsible it would be to not take a step back and reflect on what there might be to do more or better of, or do things a little bit differently in the future, to make sure that we're taking every step possible to ensure the safety of our citizens right here in our city. And Mayor, I know you were on the phone earlier with mayors from around the city discussing this very kind of thing. What should cities be doing?
Let me, I appreciate your mentioning that. I spent over an hour on the phone with over 100 mayors from around the country, both Republicans and Democrats, who were searching for thoughts, ideas of what we can do in the local government public space to force a discussion, force a change in the way it's happening. Across this country, there's different state rules that restrict what local government can do in terms of ordinances and enforcement that somehow, and occasionally is preempted by states and/or federal law. I think that we need to work really hard to see if we can't get some understanding amongst all those levels of government, how we deal with these kinds of issues and get the enforcement and the options open to especially the levels of government that deal with it firsthand and are the first responders to these kinds of situations, and see if we can't reduce the risk. The three things that came out of the discussion from this nonpartisan discussion, if you will, that we had earlier today was, hopefully, one, looking at background checks for anybody that's applying for a license, to make sure that we do a thorough background check and see amongst all 50 states that people that are applying for this don't have some issues in their background that we would otherwise deny them. I mean, under a certain law today, somebody could get a license in another state and come back and use that to purchase weapons in the state of Iowa. The second thing we talked about was gun trafficking, and for those that do that and are caught doing that, that that should be a federal offense, and which obviously carries a different level of punishment. The other thing that was discussed and we think needs to have discuss, further discussion, is the assault weapons issue and the high-capacity magazines or clips, if you will, that are available. Certainly, those aren't for hunting, and I would think that we'd all be appalled if somebody went hunting deer with a 100-round magazine. It is no longer sport. And I think that those discussions I have received through the years because of my stand on these issues, a number of calls from folks that weren't quite sure where I stood on this issue, and I want to make it perfectly clear that it's all about safety of our citizens, and it's all about illegal activity amongst gun carriers. It's not about hunters. It's not about those that, these issues I don't think reflect on the Second Amendment rights. So at any rate, Mr. Coleman, I just, those are the discussions that we had that lasted way over an hour, and obviously, mayors can't make decisions in this, but certainly, we can open up a discussion in City Hall, and we can have further discussions with our representatives at the state level. come back and use that to purchase weapons in the state of Iowa. The second thing we talked about was gun trafficking, and for those that do that and are caught doing that, that that should be a federal offense, and which obviously carries a different level of punishment. The other thing that was discussed and we think needs to have discuss further discussion is the assault weapons issue and the high-capacity magazines or clips, if you will, that are available. Certainly, those aren't for hunting, and I would think that we'd all be appalled if somebody went hunting deer with a hundred-round magazine. It is no longer sport, and I think that those discussions I have received through the years because of my stand on these issues, number of calls from folks that weren't quite sure where I stood on this issue, and I want to make it perfectly clear that it's all about safety of our citizens, and it's all about illegal activity amongst gun carriers. It's not about hunters. It's not about those that these these issues, I don't think, reflect on the Second Amendment rights. So at any rate, Mr. Coleman, I just, those are the discussions that we had that lasted way over an hour, and obviously, mayors can't make decisions in this, but certainly, we can open up a discussion in City Hall, and we can have further discussions with our representatives at the state level and the federal level. And I think that we, as we spoke before, and everybody at this table has spoken, are concerned about the safety of our of ourselves, our businesses, and our children. So, sir Coleman?
As I started, I didn't have a good answer for my dad earlier, you know, what should we be doing? But I do hope we don't allow this tragedy to pass without really trying to take the next step. And some of them are going to be political decisions, as Mayor County alluded to. If we had the authority to pass a regulation banning, you know, multi-weapon clips that can only be used for assault kind of scenarios, I would vote for that kind of thing in our city. But that's that's not an option for us, but there are ways that we can cooperate. There's there's cities that have done an excellent job with their zoning and planning for, you know, how buildings are constructed and sharing designs, and I know our police department has had people at those conferences and done those kinds of things over time. But we need to do everything possible to make sure that our citizens have confidence that we're not letting this pass without redoubling our efforts and being more creative and more cooperative than ever before. And Manager, I sent a note to you and the police chief and fire chief earlier. I don't know if you have any other comments, but I'd like to refer this back to you, and I'd like to ask for your genuine commitment to initiate a process that's certainly larger than just our fire chief and police chief.
Mr. Coleman, councilmembers, well, you've raised an issue that is both timely, and it's hard to think of something that's more important in front of us right now. So you have my commitment and the commitment of our organization to look at this thoroughly and to come back to you with our best ideas on how we might make things better here. Obviously, it's the sort of issue that unilateral actions by this council may be may be very helpful in some areas, but my guess is to make progress, and a lot of other areas will take action beyond the confines of what you're able to do, and we'll identify those sorts of things as well and bring those to your attention.
I would just like to add that I think this would be an excellent topic to have the Metro Advisory Council take up, and we have an executive committee tomorrow morning, so I see if we're going to do it on a regional basis, that that would be a great avenue for us to work through.
That'd be great. Maybe we can be there. Well, I'll, I hope you'll vote to receive these comments. They're not intended to, you know, champion any, you know, left-wing or right-wing ideology. It's about being problem solvers and making sure that the most important issues have our attention as a council. So I'm going to refer this discussion to the manager, and I hope at the appropriate time, you'll have a report back for us as to how we might go about strengthening the safety net we have here.
And also moving item thirty-five.
Thank you.
Seven, yes?
Apologize to everybody. We'll skip right now to the hearings that completes the consent agenda. Hearing items open with item forty-six, and let's note that we're doing that at five-twenty-six. Item forty-six is on the application of Majestic Limousine and Coach to increase the number of limousines operated under the certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a limousine service from twelve to twenty-two limousines, Council Communication number twelve-six-eighteen. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, does anyone?
I'll move item forty-six.
Want to move this? Mr. Manager, I would say as we vote on this that I would like to ask you to, because of the taxi cab limitations, I mean, this, I'd sort of like to have a report back that would tell us how many limousines we have operating in and around. A lot of them operate only from the airport to someplace, you know, is there an appropriate number, or is there a number that's too many? I mean, how many? Should we have that discussion? I mean, I would leave it open. We could have a thousand of them, but maybe that's not appropriate.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, why don't we first do a sort of a survey and get you the current data and what the numbers are? We'll give you thoughts in terms of the numbers, and you can take it from there.
Right. Seven-oh, item passes. Item forty-seven, on the request from Available Materials Handling LLC to rezone six-oh-seven Southeast Twenty-first Street from M-one light industrial to limited M-two heavy industrial subject conditions, A is the first consideration of the ordinance. Is there anybody here to speak on item forty-seven or forty-seven-A? I see we have a staff member stepping right up.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Michael Ludwig, Planning Administrator. Before each night is the rezoning of the subject property. The Plan and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this rezoning. At the meeting, representatives from Kemen Industries were present and expressed some concern about rezoning of the property. After the Plan and Zoning Commission meeting, it's my understanding that the applicant and Kemen met to discuss the conditions that were recommended by the Planning Commission and actually hoped to place some additional conditions on the property, one being that the zoning be limited to the current owner of the property. Under zoning, the zoning runs with the land, not with the owner of the property, and so the resolution has been between the parties to agree that the rezoning should be denied, and the applicant should seek a use variance from the zoning board of adjustment, and that it's my understanding that they would have the support of Kemen Industries in that request and the effort that they could limit the use variance to the current property owner and ask a future owner to come back to the Board of Adjustment. So with that, that concludes the staff presentation.
So your recommendation is to do what, Mike?
We are recommending denial of the rezoning, and then the applicant would apply to the zoning board of adjustment for a use.
It's kind of like what we did last week.
Exactly.
On Southwest Ninth, yeah.
Southwest Ninth.
All right. So with that as the recommendation, we see another speaker here.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, William Lillis, three-seventeen Sixth Avenue, Suite three-hundred. We're appearing on behalf of Kemen Industries. With me is Libby Nelson, General Counsel for Kemen, and we concur with the staff's recommendation. We have met with the adjacent property owner who is also here, Mr. Holt, and we urge you to deny this. We simply, on behalf of Kemen, do not want to have that property zoned from an M-one to an M-two. We think in working with the staff and with Mr. Holt that there's another opportunity to resolve that if you turn this project down, turn the zoning down, then they can in turn go back to the zoning board of adjustment and accomplish the same end. They've done a remarkable job of cleaning up this particular site. We salute them, but we simply, because of the nature of what Kemen does and the investment they're putting in, we simply don't want that potential to expand to allow for any kind of a salvage operation.
All right.
So there's another another way to do it, in our opinion, and so we agree with the staff. If you'd turn them down, we certainly would work with Mr. Holt to go forward to the Board of Adjustment, hopefully with your endorsement. Thank you.
Another speaker.
It's a strange thing that I ask you to deny something. Tony Holt, six-oh-seven Southeast Twenty-first Court. I ask you to not deny this tonight, but at the same time, give a recommendation that the type of uses that we're asking for be granted in the special condition. What we're asking for is basically buy and sell machinery, and it's very difficult for zoning to know whether our machinery runs or not, and so by asking for this use, we wouldn't have to have a zoning enforcement officer have something in question. So I'd appreciate you sending a comment on, if you would, please.
Thanks, I'll do that.
Can I ask, are you okay with this kind of recommendation? I had a sense that everybody is kind of supportive of doing what you want to do, but doing it through the zoning board of adjustment. Are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that. I understand that, not that I wouldn't mind having M-two, but I have a neighbor to get along with, and we came to this conclusion, and I think it's a good thing. And if I understand it, I will be granted to do what I need to do.
All right. Tony, I appreciate you coming down. Thank you. Ryan?
Thanks, Mayor. I think the concern is not so much with what your use is going to be, but if we change the zoning on it, the future use and future possible owners would be able to do things that would be not good for the future of Kemen, and so I appreciate everybody working together on this. Bill and I talked on Friday, and so my motion will be to deny item forty-seven, add the comments that we at the Board of Adjustment support the requested variance, use variance of Mr. Holt, and refer it down to a Board of Adjustment, if that makes sense, Mr. Legal Counsel, if we can add our two cents to the Board of Adjustment motion, Board of Adjustment.
My recommendation would be rather than indicating support for the particular activity that you indicated, the council has no objection to that simply because of an opinion I just gave to you last week in a confidential regarding the ZBA and council's role of oversight. So my suggestion would be the motion would be appropriate, but just to make clear rather than support that there's no objection to that.
I strike the I strike the last statement in support and make add the statement that we have no objection to it, and I apologize for that. I'll move forty-seven to deny.
Right, next gentleman is item forty-eight, in the request Wakanda Living LLC to amend the Wakanda Living PUD conceptual plan in the vicinity of fourteen-thirty Park Avenue, subject to conditions, A is a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And it looks, is there anybody here to speak on this? And want to thank all of you for coming down.
Thank you.
Have a great holiday.
Steve, there's somebody behind you.
A Wakanda Living spokesman.
I am. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Steve Nieber with Hubble Realty Company, sixty-nine-hundred West Town Parkway, West Des Moines, Iowa. Just a brief overview on what we're asking for. We started this project in two thousand and seven. Put up a map here. And this is the original PUD plan, where we had proposed twin homes on the west, twelve of those lots, and then single-family on the east, abutting the golf course. This allowed, the zoning allowed for fifty-four units total, and this plan showed twenty-seven units at the time, back in two thousand and seven. After that, in two thousand and eight, when we figured out what we're going to try to do, and things were still going fairly well with the economy, we thought we could sell all single-family homes. So we actually submitted this as a plan at that time in two thousand and eight, all single-family homes. So we switched and went to single-family homes on the west. Here we are, two thousand and twelve, and we still have four of those lots left, but we're at a point where we want to plan for the next phase. So with what we've learned from the market, what we're proposing is to go back to the attached twin homes, yet put those twelve units on the east side of the development, and in the middle, put the single-family homes. Those lots we're proposing to be the same-size lots as the first eleven lots. At one time, these were thought to be larger lots for larger-priced homes, and honestly, those homebuyers just haven't shown up. So we're proposing for the middle is the same price point and same lot size as what we've done in the first phase. This plan has thirty-two units, which is still well under the allowed fifty-four per the zoning. Most of the discussion at P&amp;Z and with the at the neighborhood meetings has been regarding the twin homes, so I wanted to show you our concept of the twin homes and what we're thinking there. We have both a two and a three-car garage unit. This is the three-car. We've designed them such that each side will be somewhat unique in its architecture, yet compatible, so it'll have the feeling of a single-family home. Be a lot of brick, low-maintenance surfaces. Then we have a thirty-six-foot or two-story, or excuse me, two parking unit that is also the same architecture in the fact that each side would be somewhat different in the feeling of a single-family home. The three-car unit is about nineteen-hundred-and-sixty square feet and would sell for just under four-hundred thousand dollars. The two-car home would be about fifteen-hundred square feet and start just at over three-hundred thousand. Both those are without a finished basement. We currently have four reserves for those twin-home units, so we know the market's accepting them. Some people just don't want the size of the single-family homes that we had proposed to the east. So we think this would be an added mix that will help speed along the development and really help the whole project in total. So we've read the staff report and are in agreement, so I'm here to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
I've got a couple, just to have Steve address. Steve, could you talk about the traffic issue? I know in reading P&amp;Z and looking at comments that were made, there was some discussion about traffic, and I know there was a traffic study done previously.
Zoom in on this a little bit. This is a Google map that I printed off, but traffic has looked at our plan and has said in the staff report that they are comfortable with what we're proposing. The additional five lots is not going to impact the original plan of what we've done. When it was talked about originally, when this project was put in the PUD stage, we had built a frontage road, actually a long parallel to Park, to take a traffic load off of Park and provide two access points onto Park so that the access could be controlled. So we are continuing with that plan. All these lots would have access to our own private frontage roads that would then have just the two access points onto Park so that we could control the access. So we're keeping with the same plan. Traffic has looked at it, and they're comfortable with the extra five lots.
And then the other item, going back to the original, where you had the the twin homes down on the east end, and you're still going to have single-family in the middle? Yeah, the thirteen through twenty-one.
This is the original. Here's the here's the proposal.
Or twelve through twenty?
Yep.
Okay. What is Hubble's intent with those?
Well, twelve through twenty, we would also be building spec homes, so we will put up some spec homes in this area, as well as have lots for sale to outside builders, or if a homeowner wants to bring their own builder, we allow that flexibility. But we in turn will also make an investment in that area, and homes that we'll build on speculation to sell, so we'll have some product there of our own.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Steve, I'm through. Is there anybody else in the audience here to speak on this item? We'd ask that any individuals who would like to speak, we'd like to see all over here so we have an idea how many are going to speak. I see two. Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Dave Schneider, the general manager at Wakanda Club, thirty-nine-fifteen floor. I represent the Wakanda Board of Directors and its membership. We are here to speak in favor of the proposed change. We have had numerous meetings with the with the Wakanda firm, or I'm sorry, with the Hubble Realty Company. They have come in and met with our board numerous times. Our concerns were from an architectural standpoint, what would they look like, and obviously having a vibrant community, and they have satisfied all the things that that we were looking for, and we speak in favor of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I'm Phil Miller, fourteen-twenty-five Park Avenue, since nineteen seventy-one, resident thereof, and one of the many protestors. I think I've provided a written statement duly filed with the clerk today and hopefully delivered to all of you. I think fairly well fairly well lays out our concerns, which many of the neighbors have now and had at the original meeting before the zoning board, I think it was back maybe in early spring or so, in which the zoning board voted, I believe, seven to three against this plan. Then they flip-flopped completely, which concerns me and indicates to me that this is not a reasonable plan, and voted eight-three at the last meeting with one abstention. is not a reasonable plan, and voted eight-three at the last meeting with one abstention. I know of no current traffic study, even though the gentleman here from Hubble says there is one. I understand that this was one some time ago. So we are requesting several things in here, as you can easily see those. This is a very dangerous street, as we all know, that live there. Many of the people, I've copied the protests in writing that they submitted. Many of the people came here and spoke the first time, the second time the protesters did, so this is merely a compilation of that. So hopefully, you've had time to read that. Won't take up a lot of your time, but several things here, I'll just mention those. Many of the protesters don't appreciate the fact that these nice, inexpensive, they are, duplexes, so to speak, are different than what was originally proposed. And that certainly is a factor. It's a fact that there's no current traffic study here in the last several months or so, or currently. Another thing is, a number of duplexes here are going to have how many families in them? How many high school kids are going to be driving? We need a current study. And to say that we've had one some time ago really kind of begs the question, doesn't really address the issue. The people that have protested are some of the people who live in the high-rises, and some of the people who live in the neighbors, and some of the people, surprisingly quite so, who owned some of the homes that were originally built, because now Hubble is going to sell these new ones for less money. They're going to lose money. So that's an important factor, too, I would hope, for those who are going to be voting and assessing this situation, that originally here, Wakanda came complaining over and over again the first time, at the first zoning board meeting, that they weren't talked to. That Hubble was indifferent to them. That Hubble didn't care. And that's what they said. That concerns me. It concerns me, too, and the protesters, that we have meetings between Hubble and Wakanda to patch things up now, but we're not invited. We're not privy to that, except for one meeting before. Lack of communications. We're neighbors. Originally, when they built the big barn there, historically, right up from my house, there's a huge utility. I caddied at Wakanda Club, so I know every little leaf of grass in that, what was a pristine place, a beautiful view. We would all agree on that. But they built a barn on the corner there, and Wakanda Club never consulted us, so 15 of us neighbors filed suit against Wakanda and their members. And we worked it out in amicable fashion. I met with some of the members, with the permission of the 15 plaintiffs, and we settled it right in the old barn over there, amicably and in a friendly manner. Everybody was happy. The stipulation was simply this: Wakanda plant trees around the big barn so we don't see this huge barn, us neighbors. Yes, they would do that. I knew most of the members. I caddied for their fathers. They were very amicable. We settled that, resolved it. Those trees are still there with the stipulation, if one tree gets wiped out, they got to replace it. Another thing concerns me is I've had people come down and look through these files down here, study them. I don't find what happened to the first 10 trees they wiped out over there. And then they come down here just recently, people from my office that I hired, and lo and behold, the staffers find out there's going to be three more trees that are going to be chopped down and destroyed. And the staffers didn't even know about it, so I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
And we would like to have it remanded back to the zoning board for more study, or for you folks to order them to get more information, et cetera, forth in these papers. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller, did you, we've already received what he has?
We've received those.
Okay, so we don't need to receive them filed? Thank you.
Twenty-five, already stamped in, on the record.
Thank you, sir.
Just making our points. Thank you.
Mrs. Henson?
Can I ask Mike Ludwig if he could come up and help answer some questions for us? I would appreciate it. Okay, Mike, can you go back and give us some historical perspective on the first P&amp;Z meeting that Mr. Miller is referring to? Because I know it did come before P&amp;Z, and I believe that they did not go forward, and it came back to a second P&amp;Z. So if you could walk us through that?
After the first Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the recommendation from the Planning Commission was for denial of the zoning, and a significant part of the hearing testimony was opposition to the project, including opposition from the Wakanda Club itself, which was what this project was originally a part of, the land was. The applicant withdrew their application. There were also some questions about insufficient neighborhood meeting by other property owners, and so Hubble decided to go back to the drawing board. They ended up having meetings with the Wakanda Board of Directors and also had neighborhood meetings with the surrounding property owners and the other owners within the homeowners' Association of this development. They resubmitted a new application, which went back to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission had another public hearing on the item, heard some similar concerns from neighbors across the street on the north side of Park Avenue about traffic. All of our information from our Traffic and Transportation Division is that the number of units are duly planned for. Having the frontage road along Park Avenue has prevented there from being 20-some driveways backing out onto Park Avenue, so there's a frontage road that all of those driveways have access to. And the location of the two access points on Park Avenue was acceptable to our Traffic and Transportation Division. No plan to change those locations with this change. And ultimately, when the plan went to our Planning Commission, was reviewed by our Traffic and Transportation Department, there were no concerns expressed about the additional units or the capacity of the surrounding street network to accommodate that traffic. So our Planning Commission, at the hearing, the Wakanda Board of Directors reversed their previous position based on the efforts that Hubble had to contact them. There were still some property owners opposed, but ultimately, the Plan and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of this rezoning to allow this change to the plan.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that background. I appreciate it. Okay. I know Mr. Miller had some strong feelings about it, and Mr. Lester, I shared the document with you, and is there anything that we need to be concerned about at this point before I move forward?
Well, the document has a number of allegations that, if true or accurate, could be rather serious. Unfortunately, getting the document this late in the proceeding, there's no way for us to make any kind of independent verification or review. That being said, I'm fairly confident that our Planning Staff and the Plan and Zoning Commission understand due process. Those are the concerns that I'm mostly interested in, in the document that's been provided. And I'm fairly comfortable and confident that they understand what due process is, that due process was awarded. I've read the notes. Nothing in the notes and the minutes of the meeting stick out or stand out as a due process violation. It's a lot of boilerplate. There aren't facts really recited in here. So that being said, I can't sit here tonight and advise Council that the complaint is frivolous. There are obviously some strong feelings and emotions here, and some concerns that are evidenced by the neighbors. But I'm not aware of anything from reviewing this document at this point in time that I would feel comfortable telling Council that they shouldn't proceed if that is their desire.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to make the motion to uphold the recommendation by Plan and Zoning, and I guess there are just several comments that I would like to make so that individuals that may be watching this on TV or have issues with this project. If you look back at the document that came from P&amp;Z, there was a significant amount of discussion regarding the issues that were raised here tonight by Mr. Miller, and I believe that those have been addressed. I agree with what I learned in talking with the, some of the officers that were here tonight from the Grays Lake Neighborhood Association. They were receiving historic, they were part of the historical awards program, so I had a chance to visit with them. They were supportive, although there was not a letter that actually came. They indicated they participated in the meetings, and they were supportive. The traffic issues, based upon the information we have in the letter and in talking with other individuals, I don't see that five additional units is going to be problematic. The frontage road really deals with the traffic-related issues on Park Avenue, and that has not changed, and that was approved and recommended as a result of the initial rezoning. And to be perfectly honest, I take offense with the referral to the buildings as duplexes. They are not duplexes. It's not the type of duplex I lived in when I was first married, I'll tell you that. But they really are a new style of living. I'd almost refer to them, other than twin homes, as row houses, or, you know, similar to what we're seeing in other parts of the city. The value of the properties on those twin homes, 300,000 to 400,000, that's right in the neighborhood of the other single families that were built, and so I don't see a decreased value there. The fact that Hubble is going to be actually doing spec homes, I can't imagine that they would be doing something that would be harmful to them. And the original allocation of the numbers, 54 is the maximum that could be built there, we are well below, even though there is a slight increase going from 27 to 32. So I think, I believe that this has been thoroughly vetted, and I concur with the P&amp;Z in moving the item.
Anybody else?
Six, yes, one, no.
All right, the item passes.
You know, I get my to show.
Item 49, on the proposed urban renewal agreement for the sale and redevelopment of 30 acres south of 3,600 block of Vandelia Road to Helena Industries, Inc., and to continue to January 14, 2013, at 5:00 p.m., Council Communication Number 12-624. I think the motion actually here is to continue. Is there anybody here to speak to this item? Seeing none?
I'll move 49.
Item 50, on the petition to establish the Ingersoll Grand self-supported municipal improvement district Schmidt, Council Communication Number 12-620.
Mayor of County and members of the Council, Michael Ludwig, Planning Administrator. Before you this evening is the proposed expanded Ingersoll Grand Schmidt boundary. Designated with blue crosshatching on this map. The blue boundary represents the boundary or legal description that was provided in the petition, which has been signed by property owners. As you'll note in the blue letter, there were, I believe, six properties that were identified on the map. In the meantime, we had a meeting with the County Auditor's Office, and they reviewed the legal boundary and found that there were six instances where the proposed boundary actually crossed through the middle of a building that would exist. So they're unable to split, obviously, the value of a building for what is commercially zoned or what is residentially zoned. So those six properties are recommended in the public hearing tonight to be removed from the boundary. Those were noted in the blue letter, and we would propose that the ordinance that comes forward on January 28 be amended to take those properties out. Otherwise, I believe that we are currently at 37% of the property owners within the district owning value of about 55% of the total value within the district are supportive. I understand there are some additional petitions coming forth in support of the project, but those received, those are the current percentages. You did have a presentation on Schmid's this morning, and so I think you're pretty well versed on those. I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
All right. Any questions? Seeing none right at the moment. Have a speaker.
Got a couple others, I think, that are going to speak as well in favor of this. Ted Irvine, again, 2801 Ingersoll. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. Manager. This has been quite a process over the last couple of years, and we've been here several times about TIF districts and Schmids and master plans for the district. And this recent process has been very enlightening, and I think what you see in front of you tonight with the kinds of percentages that we've been able to achieve in a pretty short amount of time, we frankly started working on getting this petition out and had meetings, and have called on folks just for the last six weeks, and have been able to garner over 55% support in the district, which, of the property value, which I think is pretty darn high. We've offered to have meetings with, beyond just the process that's prescribed by the law, we've reached out for individual meetings with property owners and continue to do that. We have quite a few volunteers that have worked on this. It's been just fantastic working with staff, particularly Community Development, and Mike Ludwig has been very, very helpful with us, showing us the ropes of how this works. Roger Brown from Legal has been very helpful, kept us between the alleys on how we're approaching this, so that's been great. We've had the Council, the Downtown Community Alliance, and Glen Lyons and Operation Downtown have been working with us. Our intent going forward, if this were to pass, is to enter into an agreement with the Downtown Community Alliance to pool our resources within the boundaries of the law and have those Operation Downtown services available in our Schmidt district on Ingersoll and Grand. But I really, most of all, want to thank the property owners for recognizing the efforts of lots of volunteers that have been working very hard, and I'm speaking primarily to Restoration Ingersoll Board, who have been just tireless on this for the last 14, 15 years. And this is sort of the culmination of all of those things coming together. The property owners have recognized this by supporting us with the Schmidt petition, and the neighborhoods have been very helpful in putting together our plans with us. So we're very proud to stand here today and ask for your support of this petition. I think we've got the proof that the district supports it as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ted.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, Jake Christensen, 506 Third Street, Suite 300. I'm here to speak in support of establishment of the Schmidt district on Ingersoll. I'm standing here as a property owner in downtown, as well as a property owner in the new district on Ingersoll. Speaking on that behalf, I'm also a member of the Operation Downtown Board. I'm not here representing them, but because of that position on the board and a property owner in downtown, I have a unique perspective to be able to see the, both sides of the impact of the Schmidt in downtown. I think that it's pretty telling when you have nonprofit entities voluntarily pay into the Schmidt in the downtown, and the ongoing commitment from the downtown property owners to pay into it, that it's, everybody's getting something for that. And so it's with that perspective that I strongly encourage you to establish this district on Ingersoll. Ingersoll is really with a lot of, Ted mentioned the volunteers, there's an immense amount of work that has gone into the progress to date, and we feel pretty excited about the potential for Ingersoll. And I think we have a perfect template with what's happened downtown. So with that, I would offer my strong recommendation. If you have any questions, otherwise, thank you.
Jake, thank you. Anyone else?
I have submitted nothing. Is it okay if I speak anyway?
Yes.
Absolutely.
My name is Sharon Dignaroli. I live at 710 39th Street. I live in the North of Grand neighborhood, North of Grand. in the North of Grand neighborhood, North of Grand neighborhood. I only just heard about this, and I've lived there thirty years. I've read two articles in the local paper. One said, one said that this was supposed to be an informational meeting from the council, and then this last, within the last six or seven days, it said that it would actually be voted upon. When we checked to find out what the procedure was to speak to the council, we were told that it wasn't necessary, that we could oppose it later on. What I would like to say is that, I don't understand all this, and I would like to, it says that the gentleman from the Des Moines Planning and Zoning Committee has worked on it for eight years, and again, I say, we only found out about it the last three weeks or so. The gentleman who said he's working on it is also a business owner on Ingersoll. He abstained from the vote of the Des Moines Planning and Zoning Committee, but as a person who owns the business, I wonder why he's the only one that's been working on it, or, you know, why the rest of us don't know about it. There's something called the Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District that, I understand in the letter, it says that they will be financing the work. I ask, my question is, is this a city government group, or is this outsourcing? There's a group referred to in the article that says Ingersoll and Grand Avenue Planning Committee. The gentleman from the Des Moines Zone and Planning Committee was working with them for two years. Again, I never heard anything about it. It says that those are only forty business leaders, and, business owners, I'm sorry, and property owners. Now, I wonder, because I've never seen a list of who those people are, are they one and the same? Are the business owners the same ones who own property? If so, that could be maybe twenty people out of the thousands of people that live in our neighborhood. There's something called Restoration Ingersoll Project. I don't know what that is. Is that city, or is that private? The gentleman from the Des Moines Plan and Zoning Committee has worked with them for the last two years. He said he's worked with them for eight years, I'm sorry. He's worked with them for eight years, and the last two years, he's presented the issue. We just heard someone say that everyone supports it, as I just said, but I've never heard of it. When I read the article in the paper, I went around three city blocks talking to people, and nobody had heard of it. So I don't know where this fifty-five percent comes from. It certainly isn't from my portion of the area. From what I understand, also, it says this is a twenty-year project. That would take us to the year twenty-thirty-two with double taxation. We would, I presume, we'll still pay our regular property taxes and resulting, or ensuing increases over the years till twenty-thirty-two, as well as the special tax. And it's supposed to be two dollars and twenty-five cents per one thousand dollars of assessment, which would, if a person owned a hundred thousand dollar property, it would be an additional two hundred and twenty-five dollars, plus your regular taxation that we pay already. If that's so, and then is that going to stay the same over the twenty years, or is that also going to increase? I have lots of questions, and I don't know where to go to get them answered. Yes?
Just, by the way, for the record, what was your name and address?
Sharon Vignaroli, V-I-G-N-A-R-O-L-I, seven-ten Thirty-Ninth Street.
Is that a residential or a?
Yes. No, it's a private. It's my home.
Okay, residential is not, is excluded.
Is excluded? I didn't understand that.
Yeah, it's excluded.
It's extra taxes only from the business owners?
It's right here in this, in this blue.
Yeah, it's in the blue hash.
It's these, it's these properties in the blue.
You know, I talked to your husband, but I thought it was a business he was talking about.
Oh, no.
We would have told you earlier, but you were really compelling.
Sorry. So I believe there is some misinformation that's been floating around North of Grand Neighborhood, that residences would be participating. That's not accurate. And we tried to clear that up with information earlier, but obviously, it didn't get out to everybody.
Oh, yeah, because there were a couple of different articles in the Register, and they, one said one thing and another said another, with all due respect to the articles.
Well, but what I would suggest, what I would suggest, though, is, is that we sit down with Mr. Irvine, and I'd be happy to join you, just to answer and give you information, because some of the comments you made here, Ingersoll Restoration and North of Grand Neighborhoods, there are ten neighborhood associations that border Ingersoll and Grand. They have been very involved in this entire process. So I'd really like to have the opportunity to sit down with you, because I believe we can answer your questions satisfactorily, and you don't have to worry. You're residential, so.
Yeah, I just wanted more information, because there was so much information there, and it was hard to, and you're saying where's the individual property owners.
And, by the way, Mike, you might spend a moment with her to kind of explain what's going on also.
After the meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
And I'll follow up with you. I'd be happy to follow up with you.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Sharon?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Thank you for coming down with your questions, and you're always welcome, if you've got a question.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming down. Anything else? We have another speaker.
Well, Matt Cohen, seven-eleven Forty-first Street, also work at thirty-seven oh six Ingersoll. I sit on the North of Grand Neighborhood Association Board, as well as participated at length with Ted at the helm and Restoration Ingersoll through the process. I thought it was a wonderful process, very thoughtful, considered all, everyone's perspectives. Every neighborhood was involved in the process, and I thought it was really a great act to follow, and hopefully, that could happen in this, in the city for future projects. In any case, I think it was a great model, and I feel fortunate for participating. It has our support and my recommendation.
Matt, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other speakers, do we have a motion?
I'd just like to make a couple of comments and echo some of the earlier comments that had been made by Ted and Matt and Jake, and the level of volunteer activity to get this done has just been tremendous. The, I remember when the list first came out, the comment was made, "This is really daunting. I'm not sure we can get this done." And lo and behold, we're at fifty-five percent, which is excellent. So I'm happy to move it, and a huge thanks to everybody involved.
I'll note that I'm going to abstain as a property owner, commercial property owner in the area.
Six yes, one abstain.
Ironically, your higher taxes are one reason I support it.
Thank you. And actually, I sign on to this, so.
He did.
Item fifty-one, on the proposed eleventh amendment to the Metro Center Urban Renewal Plan, Council Communication number twelve dash six sixteen. Anyone here to speak to this item? Proposed amendment to the Metro Center Urban Renewal Plan.
I'll move fifty-one.
Seven yes.
Item fifty-two, items regarding the Des Moines Botanical Garden. A, a hearing on the amendment on the Vacation Ordinance number fifteen thousand fourteen regarding the reservation of utility easements on the vacated botanical center and adjacent grounds, and on the amendment of lease of vacated property. B is the first consideration of the vacation ordinance to change the reservation of easements to only easements of record and reserving an easement for the MetroNet shared communication system fiber infrastructure. C is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by the Parks and Recreation Department and the Legal Department, and requires six votes. And D is the termination of the Intergovernmental Twenty-eight E Agreement with the Des Moines Water Works for the operation management of the botanical center. Is there anyone here to speak to these items?
Fred White, representing the Board of the Greater Des Moines Botanical Garden. My office is at four hundred Locust Street. The, as we got into the planning for the garden, we realized that there were several utilities that were going to be running right under the garden and would need to be moved. These are not sewers, by the way. The sanitary sewer, thirty-six inch old brick sewer that runs under the gardens will stay where it is, and we've been assured that the things that we're building on top of it will not be a problem. The easement, incidentally, that the city has as a result of the lease, the easement covering the sewers, requires us to get the city's approval to build on top of it, and we're in the process of doing that now, but we've been verbally told that what we're doing is okay. So I'm not talking about the sanitary sewer or the storms. But there are three utilities that run along Robert D. Ray Drive, namely the Mid-American Energy Gas Line, Century Link Telephone Line, and the MetroNet, what do you call it, Fiber Optic Line. And those all need to be moved in order that they don't run underneath our water garden and underneath the other gardens, which could in the future require, you know, excavation in those areas, which we just can't tolerate. And when we realized that and we looked at the vacation ordinance and the lease agreement dealing with utilities, it was, we sought legal advice, and it was recommended that we ask the city to amend those so that they would not, but let me say that because they, as they exist today, they essentially require us to pay for moving those utilities whether or not we would be legally required to. We will certainly pay if we are required to. We are certainly willing to hold the city harmless, but we would not like to be ordered by the city to pay these utilities whether or not they, that payment would be justified. And that's what this is all about.
Any questions? Anybody? Mr. White? Yes, more?
Fred, I'm just curious. D, under this, we're terminating the agreement with Des Moines Water Works and going with management, Greater Des Moines Botanical Company. I don't know, maybe Stephanie can answer this, but are you going to attempt to hire the Water Works people to stay on with you, or do you know what's going to happen to those people?
Yeah, I know, and she can tell you, too. But we told the Water Works that we would employ people for up to a year if they wished to be employed by us, at our wages and that sort of thing. None of them have opted to do so. They are all going to go back to the Water Works and are, I think, all covered by their agreement and have jobs there. But we gave them that opportunity, and they elected not to. So we're staffing up so that we'll be in a position to take over the operation on January first.
And how many individuals would that be, Fred?
Say it again.
How many individuals would that be?
Well, let's see, you'll have about eight or nine staff by then.
Between in the next year, between nine and eleven, full-time equivalents, which is approximately what Water Works has today.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And, incidentally, the lease requires that we set up two million dollar endowment by January first. That's been done, and we'll provide you evidence of that. It's in the community foundation.
Thank you, sir. Unless anybody has any other questions, we're going to let you go.
Thank you.
Question or a statement, I guess. I think, if I remember right, it was about a ten-foot area that for, be used for the utilities, for these utilities that were in the river.
Actually, it'll be about twenty.
Twenty feet.
Yeah, we've defined an area that the utilities can build in without causing any problems for us, and we'll give them an easement. And that includes MetroNet.
Right.
Period.
All right, thank you very much. Brian, any thoughts?
Nope.
Brian, I got some thoughts.
Is this yours?
Bob's. I mean, I'm.
It's a little unusual how this.
It's on the east side of the river.
I love it.
North of the interstate, yeah, two thirty-five, yeah.
Right.
Well, I just think it's, you know, a great facility that they're proposing, and hopefully, it will be a nationally ranked garden. It will draw people into our city, and it'll be a great facility for all of us to go visit and bring other people in. So if there's no other questions or comments, I'll move fifty-two, A, B, C, and D.
All right.
Seven yes?
Let's note, this brings the hearings to an end for two thousand twelve, and it's six eighteen. Takes us back to item forty-one. Item forty-one is an ordinance first consideration amending Chapter seventy-eight of the municipal code regarding licensing and regulation of peddlers. Council Communication number twelve dash six fourteen, there was an item A under there, which was withdrawn. Anybody to speak on this item?
Yeah, I do.
Seeing none?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This comes about as a result of discussion we had earlier this year, because I believe several of us at this table, as well as in the clerk's office, were receiving a number of complaints, and so Legal and all of the appropriate bodies worked to come up with a, an ordinance that hopefully will address some of this. And I am pleased with the ordinance. I hope that it has an impact, and I know there's still a question about the timeline that we need to get resolved, and that's why we're just going to move the first reading tonight. But I believe it is extremely important that we get this information out to the citizens so that they are aware of what their rights are, because too many citizens really don't understand that when people come door-to-door, that there are requirements that they have to meet, and they just assume that these individuals can do it, you know, and not have to comply with any of the city requirements. So what I would hope also is, is that we can have an article in the city source, as well as get notice out to all of the neighborhood associations, so they can include it in their respective newsletters. Because the fact that the individuals going door-to-door, the peddlers, now are required to actually have a copy of the permit, show the citizens a permit, leave the permit with the property owner, you know, that says a lot. The other questions that came up, and there are some other items in here as well, but for nonprofits with Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, children coming that are selling goods for fundraisers for schools, they're not going to have to meet the same requirements here that are spelled out, because they're doing something for the community good. Whereas, political candidates are also excluded from this, is my understanding. I just want to make sure, so that political candidates can go door-to-door, because they're not selling anything. There may be a question about that, but supposedly, they're not selling anything. So I believe it addresses the issues. I'll be anxious to see how it goes. And one last thing, too, is the three complaints. So if citizens have complaints, if they are not getting products that they're actually purchasing, which, that's the complaint I get, are magazines that they sign up for, actually give a check for, and then it never arrives, that would be a time for them to file a formal complaint with the city clerk's office. So thank you for bringing this forward. I appreciate it. I will move item forty-one.
Takes us to item forty-three. Item forty-two was not used. Forty-three is amending Chapter one-twenty-six of the municipal code to establish a one-year waiting period on reapplication after denial of a certificate of public convenience and necessity conduct a taxi cab or limousine service. Council Communication number twelve dash six twenty-one. Council Communication Number 12-621. Anybody here to speak to this item? Seeing none, we have a motion.
Seven, yes?
Takes us to Communications and Reports. Item 44 is receipt of the 2011-2012 Annual Report of the Greater Des Moines Public Art Foundation. Anybody here to speak to that? I would guess our motion here is to receive and file.
I'm happy to make a motion to receive and file, and they're doing a nice job. And I thought the summary, I believe all of us got an email from Alan, probably one of the last ones we'll all get. Alan, thank you very much for the summary of the financial overview in the last five years.
Is that the last time his name is?
Seven, yes?
Item 44I is a receipt of the One Water Works adopted budget for the calendar year ending December 31, 2013. Anybody here to speak to that? Seeing none, could we have a motion for that?
Seven, yes?
Item 45 is from Stephen Bishop of 1305 Locust Street, Number 1, to speak regarding issues related to residential parking permit A for the parking adjacent to the Arlington-Hallet Buildings, Sculpture Garden, and Nationwide.
Hi, good evening. My name is Steve Bishop. I'm a resident at 1305 Locust Street, apartment number 1. I apologize to Mr. Mayor and Mr. City Manager for the protocol mistake of not including you in this alliteration of my letter unless you're automatically included in the word "City Council Members." But I particularly want to thank Councilwoman Hensley. She was kind enough to return a phone call promptly when I was, shall we say, rather upset and less together than I hope I am tonight over my car being towed, over some tickets that I didn't think I should have gotten. If you allow me, I'll read this introductory letter and then briefly walk you through the papers that I have brought along as, you know, some support of my case, my cause. I'm not expecting you to come up with any sort of a solution or decision tonight, but rather, I just want to call your attention to this and hope that there can be a resolution that will leave me feeling less stressed about the outcome. At the end, I also want to show you a survey that I made independently of the situation regarding the parking in these meter spaces last Saturday night, just to show you that this program is not working in terms of ensuring that those of us who have the permits have access to spaces, but that's a second related but separate issue. I'm a resident of the Hallett Flats at the east end of the Papajon Sculpture Garden. I take pride in being an urban pioneer who moved to downtown Des Moines as one of the first occupants of the newly renovated Arlington and Hallett Buildings back when they were, there were still dilapidated, abandoned auto repair businesses where the sculptures now stand. I subsequently served for five years as a charter member of the Board of Directors of the Downtown Neighborhood Association. In the intervening years, all the terrific positive things that have happened in the Western Gateway have had one negative consequence for residents of our buildings, that being fewer and fewer options for parking without access to the various lots in the neighborhood that are now needed for parking for these new businesses. So this past August, I purchased my first City of Des Moines Residential Parking Permit A, and I've continued to pay $50 each month since to maintain my ability to park near my residence, with each new permit always displayed every day since without exception. And you will note later why I emphasize that part. Having an A permit was supposed to allow me to park in any designated reserved spaces on Grand Locust and 13th without having to feed the meters at any hour 24 hours a day, and I have confirmed that policy parameter with Mr. Berry, the city's Director of Parking and Transportation. Nonetheless, I've been issued four unwarranted overtime parking tickets, one I was legally parked in an appropriate reserved space, each marked by a red and white sticker from the city on the meter, which you will find a picture of in the attachment materials. These tickets should never, and then my permit was in place, clearly visible through the front windshield, hanging from the rearview mirror. These tickets should never have been issued, but their accumulation resulted in my being designated an habitual violator, which had the consequence, without merit, of my car getting towed. In order to retrieve my car from being impounded, it cost me over $180 to pay the tickets, tickets I shouldn't have gotten in the first place and shouldn't have had to pay for, plus the towing charge, again, a cost that would never have been incurred if I hadn't been stuck with the invalid habitual violator status. And it cost me dearly in terms of the aggravation and inconvenience and stress associated with dealing with this problem. My appearance before the council is to review with you the details of how this came about to show you evidence of why the ticket should not have been issued, and ultimately to seek redress and remuneration for the adverse impact on my life this situation has caused. The first sheet is just simply my permits to show you that I have indeed bought those permits, and the only time that they ever came off the car in all these months since was the 10 minutes that it took me to go make a photocopy of these and put them back in place. The reason I make that point is that Sergeant Beardsley, the officer in the Police Department who supervises the meter maids, when I had several discussions with him, on several occasions, he challenged me and said, "How do we know your permit was displayed?" Well, I have photographs to show that it was in place the very first time I got one of these tickets. But if his reasoning is allowed to be applied, that means every permit holder anywhere in the city should have to take his camera along and photograph his car, his parking permit, and the meter every time he parks, because otherwise, how do you prove your permit was in place? All I can do is establish the fact that this is exactly the way it's been. Each month, I put the new permit on top of the pile of the old ones. It stays hanging right there on my, you know, rearview mirror. In fact, these pictures were taken the day I came down here to register to speak to you outside City Hall. That's the reflection of City Hall in the window. The point is, all those permits have always been there, and they're easy to see. The only reason you wouldn't is if you were too tall. I know this is taking long. I apologize. The, okay, so that's, this is, these are the series of pictures that I took the day I got the first unwarranted ticket. They just simply show the relationship of my car to the meter. It shows the red and white sticker that you saw on the previous page in position on the meter, and then you can see in the bottom right two pictures, parking ticket with my permit hanging above, and then a close-up of the permit hanging there. So I just don't understand why I was given that ticket.
Okay. Steve, could I, I'm sorry, could I interrupt you?
Sure.
We are running a little over on your time, but I'd ask Mrs. Hensley, Chris, what would you like to do here?
Steve, after I had a chance to visit with you, I have followed up with the Police Department and Traffic and Transportation, as well as the building owners at the Arlington-Hallet, just to get a sense as to were there issues with the permits. And the one comment I did hear, and you did make reference to it, is, is that there are, because of the popularity and the activity downtown, there are more and more people that are parking at the permit meters. So I believe that is something that we really do need to address.
And that's this last sheet, but it also is relevant to the evening hours, not to the times when I got these tickets.
Correct, yeah.
This is just about, you know, the other night, out of 31 available spaces, there were only four where someone with our permit was parked, all the rest were, but that's, you know, that's separate. I want to also acknowledge, if I could, please, that one of the problems with this whole situation, and I will own up to it, you know, when you have something like this thrown at you, you never get to plan the timing of it. And I didn't appeal these initial tickets. So each time I brought this up to Sergeant Beardsley, to the clerk's office, it's always, "Well, you didn't appeal these," so, you know, it's almost like saying, "You're stuck with the consequences." And maybe that's the reality, but in the end, it isn't even about the 180 bucks. It's about the right or wrong, where people, in the course of doing their job, whether it was lack of adequate training, which I think might be suggested by the fact that it's multiple meter maids involved in these tickets, either lack of training, or carelessness, or reasons that I wouldn't even presume to imagine what they might be. Fact still remains, they gave me tickets, and I had other things going on in my life where this wasn't a big priority, because I naively thought all I had to do was come in, point this out to the people that are responsible, and they would fix the problem, just as if you went to a business and you bought an item, and they were supposed to charge $20 to your credit card, and instead they charged 200. If you went back to them, they would say, "Gee, Mr. Bishop, we're sorry. Our employee screwed up, and we'll fix this for you." But what I've encountered every time I talk to somebody about this is, you didn't appeal them, it's up to you to fix the problem that our employees caused, and so it's all put back on me, and that's the frustrating thing.
Steve, let me ask his question. What do you pay for that permit?
$50 a month.
$50 a month, so $600 a year.
I mean, I just got it in August.
I got it. What do you want to do?
What I would like to do, and Steve, I have, as I indicated, I've had a chance to visit with all of the different departments that you've been involved with, and I am not comfortable, I know you and I did discuss that on occasion, or that City Council had taken into account, not the tickets, but the towing charges, but after having had a chance to visit with the appropriate individuals, I'm not comfortable going that direction tonight because they have provided me with information that I feel substantiates what was done was correct. You may agree or disagree, and you obviously don't agree with it, but what I would like to do is, two things. I'd be happy to sit down with you and Sergeant Beardsley again, just because I don't think you've had any more problems since the towing, correct?
Right.
Okay. And I would also like to sit down and just revisit the issue of the parking permits down there, because I believe that is a problem in that area. And again, just to reiterate, I did talk with the building owners, just trying to get a sense if anybody else was having problems, and we could ask the police department just to double-check, but they had not...
And I know, you brought this up on the phone, and I talked to Jody and Leslie today.
Yeah.
And all I can say is, I can look every one of you in the eye, and my permits were in place, and I was parked in a space with the appropriate sticker on it. I did not deserve these tickets, and you can hide behind the fact that I didn't appeal them. But in the end, this is not about the 180 bucks, it's about what's right or wrong, and whether a citizen is expected to bear the consequences of the malfeasance of one of the city's employees. And I am all about right and wrong, and that's why I'm upset about this.
Okay, Steve, your time is up, but let me just say, you know, nobody's standing behind right or wrong of employees. I think that they've done their job.
Poorly.
Well, you know what? That's your opinion, but I'm...
But they gave me tickets that my permit was...
Okay, let's...
I'm going to make a motion that we receive and file the comments, and that if appropriate, I know that Sergeant Beardsley had offered to sit down and to look at it with you, and I'd be happy to participate in that if you want to...
All right. Out of respect, I just will walk away, and if it isn't your willingness to address the core issue for me, that's the council's prerogative. But as I said, I can look each one of you in the eye, and...
Appreciate it.
...the permits were in place.
I will just say this before I vote, that I understand Mr. Bishop's frustration. Some of us who have received tickets in the past, although I have full respect for Sergeant Beardsley and everything that's happening, I think on occasion, there are tickets that do get handed out that maybe shouldn't be, and I, at least for one, understand Mr. Bishop's position, and actually, we'll vote no on this.
Five, yes, two, no.
All right. That finishes that part of Communications Report. Takes us now to item 53. Item 53 is approving the budget for the Downtown Self-Supervised Municipal Improvement District for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2014. Is there anybody here to speak to that?
I believe this item is coming back the second time because we actually requested a copy of the budget the last council meeting, and we now have that. We also have the presentation this morning, so I'm happy to move item 53.
And I've requested some additional information. I think the manager is going to get it for me.
Just two things. I have a request for some additional information, some things that I didn't take time to ask questions about, but Rick, the number-one thing I'd like to see when we see budgets like this, earlier, we saw the audit of the Water Works and next year's budget. I'd like to see what the budget and amount was for the previous year and what the actuals were compared to what the budget is for next year, because I have no idea. The last thing is, we've voted for a number of these even tonight, where we received them and acknowledged that they've been delivered to City Hall for our inspection and citizens' inspection. Is this different, though, that we have to approve this budget right now? I mean, the roll call uses the word "approved," which is different than others?
You always have to approve the Schmidt budgets for all of the districts every year, so that's part of the process. But your questions are perfectly appropriate, and I'm looking at Scott Sanders, who's got this responsibility, and we'll make sure that we respond back to you now. We'll talk about the formatting issue. The mayor's raised a question with me earlier about the management fees and the management line item, or actually, I should say administrative budget within, and I'll comment on that as well. We'll get a report back to you soon. We'll establish a process that gets the actuals versus budget numbers for you as well in future reports that come back to you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mayor, I'd like to say that I had a question two weeks ago, and it got to Glenn, and I received my answer, and it was clear and concise, and I appreciate that.
I was trying to save you from coming up here, Glenn.
No, I just want to say that we're happy to provide the budget information for you in any way that you like, or answer any questions that you have. Mr. Morris, questions were the only ones that I was aware of, but it looks like we're going to do this again, and that's fine, as I say.
I think it'll be approved, and it was, the motion was to approve it tonight. This, we're talking about next year, and we'll do some reporting back as well this time.
Certainly, but I mean, this is as much your Schmidt as it is ours, so it's important that we all know what we're doing together. Thank you.
Thank you. Five, yes, two, no.
All right. Item 54, review of the zoning board of adjustment decision to grant a variance of the principal permitted use to allow continued use at 4540 Lower Beaver Road as a garage for general motor vehicle repairs. Subject conditions, roll call contains an alternative motion or motions. Council Communication Number 12-619. Is there anybody here to speak to this? Seeing none.
I would make a motion to decline to remand this. I think there was one person who apparently had contacted city staff, but I haven't heard from anyone with a problem on this, so I would decline to remand it. I think staff is okay with the zoning board of adjustments recommendation, so...
Seven, yes?
Item 55, the settlement agreement and amendment to the management agreement with C Corporation for Bright Grand View and Waveland Golf Courses. Council Communication Number 12-633. Anybody here to speak to this item?
I had a briefing on it earlier and had a lot of questions answered. Maybe other people have others, but I'm comfortable enough to move it and vote for it.
There's also a couple others involved in the discussion earlier, and it did answer some questions, and I think Ned's did a great job out there, and we look forward to a continued success of that Bright Grand View.
Ned, have we got the expanded evening hours in place so we can stop in and get pizza anytime?
That's what came up during our briefing. Most interesting to me is how good this pizza is. Grammatido.
Well, and the other question I had is, why isn't Blank open?
Okay. Ned Chido, presenting C Corporation.
They left the best one open.
I know, I know. I was told it'd rotate.
I'll start with Councilwoman Hensley's question. Each year, we, in the past, we've always kept one golf course open during the winter, and we decided to rotate that to Grand View this year for a couple of reasons. We had some particular maintenance issues at Blank that we wanted to take care of that were...
were more easily taken care of if we didn't have golf traffic at the same time. Secondly, with the new clubhouse at Grand View and the golf course in really good shape, we wanted to expose that golf course to more golfers that left to their own devices probably would not come to that particular golf course. So kind of as a nudge of sorts, we did, rotated the open course to Grand View for this year. Now, if the weather cooperates, frankly, after the first of the year, and we have another spring like we had last year, we will probably open all three courses very early in the year. But that's all weather-dependent. So hopefully, that addresses your concern. Expanded hours. Here's the deal. Let me put up a sign, and I'll even expand the hours more. Right now, I can't put up a sign, and we're having a very hard time drawing any traffic in the evenings. And so at this point in time, we haven't got enough interest to expand the hours beyond what we've got going. And the sign thing is really causing us a lot of heartburn.
Let's ask Mike why we can't put up a sign.
That means he can't put up a sign?
I'd be more than happy to meet with him and discuss the sign regulations. I believe it's mostly because it's a residential zoning district, so, for the golf course, so, but we can work with him and see what can be done. There may be options to go to the board of adjustment for a variance or something like that, so we'll work with him.
You just got a few houses there in the rest of, that's business, down on East 29th and Hubble.
Once again, I'd be more than happy to meet with him and talk with him. I'm not specific on the concerns he's expressed.
I know we have a sign ordinance, but.
About a quarter to half mile north there, same side of the street, we allowed a lawn service to put in a sign in their front yard, even though it wasn't zoned for. I believe they went to the zoning board of adjustment, but.
Our daytime business is coming along, but evening business, as I indicated, is very difficult, and we are selling some pizzas.
And they're very good pizzas, right?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I want to particularly thank city staff through this whole kind of frustrating process. I thought the proceeding went very well and very professional.
Excellent, thank you.
Rick, it sounds like we might need to have a pizza party to discuss the sign issue.
You know, Ned, we're ending the regular agenda items for the year with your agenda items, so.
I hope that's a good sign.
Speaking of signs.
All right, we do have one extra item that was submitted after the 5:00 PM Wednesday deadline. It's approving the submittal of the Polk County Community Betterment Grant for Phase Two of the Highland Park Streetscape Project for $25,000. The sponsor is Councilmember Mahaffey. Council Communication number 12-635. Bob, you want to make a comment on this one?
Yes, I would. As we continue to try to improve that Highland Park area of that, and we want to add to the streetscape that's been already installed, and this here will give us some additional funding to accomplish that.
Excellent.
So I'll move item, the extra item one.
Anyone to speak on this?
Yeah. Six yes?
All right. Could we have a motion to adjourn the city council and reconvene as Board of Health? It's been moved by Ally. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm not going to ask for any opposition. The item one is legal department to proceed with a court action seeking authority to abate the public nuisances at the following locations. A is 2412 Southwest 9th Street, it's a main structure. B is 1921 11th Street, again, a main structure. Is there anyone here to speak on those two items? Items one, A and B.
I'll move one, A and B.
All right. Any discussion? Been moved?
We're done.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Post. Okay, item two. Don't leave so quick, Mr. Coleman. It's communication from the American Modern Select Insurance Company dated November 19th of 2012 stating they're insured, and Henrichs at 4146 East 30th Street sustained a total loss on October 29th of 2012, and the American Modern Select Insurance Company is holding in Fire escrow in the amount of $10,000. Is there anyone here to speak to this item? Seeing none, Mr. Coleman, would you like to move it?
I'll move that, thank you.
All right.
I'm going to watch basketball.
Any discussion of that? We got another one here, don't get so quick. Mr. Coleman voted yes, I think.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Okay. Item three is to release the Fire escrow account held for the garage structure located at 2711 South Union Street. The date of loss was October 12th, 2012, and I think we have a long debate on this item. Is anybody here?
Move.
It's been moved. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Item passes.
Good night.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn?
Move.
Everybody say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Happy holiday. See you in 2013.